This is going to the open public's meeting acts, chapter two thirty-one, the political laws of nineteen seventy-five. This meeting has been noted to the Advera Press on July eighth, twenty twenty-four. I have been duly advertised in the Advera Press issue of July twelfth, twenty twenty-four. All members of the clerk of the townships, the boroughs within the Freehold Regional High School District have been duly notified and the requirements for this posting was met on July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Please stand and join me in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do you have any changes to our board agenda line?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was pre-printed prior to the meeting, foregoing executive session, we're going to add and discuss the following additional items. For exception number three, we're discuss HIV appeal and the student discipline report. For exception number seven, we did not discuss the paving project, but did discuss a shared services agreement with Marlborough Township. And for exception number eight, we're discuss personnel issues as noted on the agenda, but did not discuss the discipline matter of the professional staff.
Okay.
And just to present, just one more item, just to note officially that on effective July eighth, we received a letter of resignation from Mr. Parisi, who was resigning from his seat on the board. I'm sure all the rest of the members will thank Mr. Parisi for his service here. Under law, the board has sixty-five days to fill that vacancy that could take us to September eleventh. Presently, the board has a board meeting already scheduled for August twenty-ninth. So the board will be advertising the vacancy and soliciting interested applications from members of Howell Township who may be interested. The cutoff for resumes will be noted in the advertisement, but will be Friday of August sixteenth.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting? Motion second.
Mr. Cobb, Mrs. Capiello.
Any discussion board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asatola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Upstate. No, it's not here.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCobb?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just to note, communications are filed in the board secretary's office. We are now going to have our superintendent before.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, everyone. On June twentieth, we graduated two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine students from the Freehold Regional High School District. And each year, we're required to report out on our students and number of graduates and number of students that were denied graduation. But our graduates for the class of twenty twenty-four are attending some of the best colleges and universities. They're pursuing trades and apprenticeships. They're joining the Monmouth County Police Academy and many that we saw evidenced at our graduations enlisting in the military. We are so extremely proud of our graduates. We wish them all the best in their future endeavors. You know, for this particular class, which I said was two hundred, two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine graduates, there were twenty-one students that did not get their diploma in June. Most of those students are working through the summer and we hope that they will, you know, be August graduates. We are continuing to monitor them through our guidance offices. But, you know, for the entire district, we wish, you know, all of our graduates much success in their endeavors. Also, I wanted to share with the board and the public, in the Freehold Regional High School District, even last school year, we were really working with students to curtail the use of cell phones. You know, like everyone, many of us had it right in our hand or right by our side, you know, really almost addicted to these phones. And students are always finding their way, you know, even if there's just a small lapse of time, this is where they retreat to. It's been an increased distraction for our students in our school. In many times, it is disrupting the learning in the classroom. It interferes with that instruction, student learning, and we have seen, and research says, that it negatively impacts students' mental health. I want to take a step next school year, and this is really in an effort to achieve the highest academic outcomes for our students, that they all have a sense of belonging and community and can are connected to each other, not just to this. That we are going to reinforce and really set some very strong expectations as we move into September, that students are not going to be able to have their cellphone, you know, insight during classroom time. They will need to be off and put away. This is something we have discussed and shared with our teachers association, the FREA. We have been working closely with our building principals and administrators. It's an extra step that we really want to take in educating our students, but our primary focus when they are in our classes, we want them successfully engaged in the instruction that's going on in the classroom, and we want to take out that distraction, you know, from the process. We will be communicating this through the summer. It'll be in my communication as well as from our building principals to our parents. And we will be clearly communicating our expectations for our students, our parents and our staff. So just wanted to convey that to our board and, you know, to the public. Also this evening, we have a couple of other more formal presentations. The state testing report, it's an annual assessment report. It's for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. Students took this test during the past school year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and there's an assessment that our multilingual students take. It's called the access test. So this evening, we are going to be presenting that report. Dr. Huff is our director of curriculum and instruction. And, you know, when we reviewed those scores, and it's an area that's been a focus for myself and our administrators, is in the area of mathematics. So we did see a slight increase in mathematics. I want that to be, you know, even higher over time and putting a lot of measures in place in our schools to ensure we have the necessary supports. You know, this is a district, our scores, you know, far exceed the state average in ELA and also in mathematics. So I see Dr. Huff has that up and to present, and I know she has a lot of ideas in working with the CNI team and the building principals and administrators and our supervisors to ensure that, you know, our curriculum is implemented and taught in all of our classrooms, but we also have the necessary supports in place for our students to achieve at the highest level. And this administration is really what we are about, is students growing and being able to see that demonstrated growth during their four years of high school with us. So thank you, Dr. Huff, for putting that together and presenting this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'm Dr. Hazel. So as Dr. Hazel said, we're going to review our data from the NJGPA as well as the access for L's test. So just to start as an overview, the NJGPA, or the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, is the state standardized test that eleventh grade students take to meet the graduation requirements. The NJGPA consists of two ninety-minute units, one in English Language Arts, DLA, and the other in mathematics. It's designed to evaluate students' ability to think critically, to solve problems, and to use information to solve problems. It is an important assessment. It helps us to navigate some of our instructional holes. But it's also important to realize that we use these assessments to evaluate useful information about our students and their progress in ELA. But the state of New Jersey does also allow for us to use alternative measures to assess students' progress, and that data is important as well. These can include the PSAT, the SAT, the ACT, or the ACTU PIS. Students can also retake the NJGPA if necessary, or they can complete a portfolio. There's several pathways where they can show proficiency and where we can utilize this data to improve our instruction and to make sure that students have a pathway to graduation. As you can see from our scores, we have a lot to be proud of in terms of the positives in our data. For example, overall, as you can see, the district is well above the state average on the NJGPA for both ELA and math. And we did show gains in mathematics from last year's assessments as well, which is good progress. But our overall goal really is for continued improvement and to make sure that all of our students are successful and have access to our academic programs. So we also want to make sure that we keep our sights on all of our students and provide supports where necessary. For example, if students are in subgroups who maybe were not proficient the first time around, we make sure that we offer multiple supports. That might include tutoring, it might offering them to take the assessment again, we might give them extra instruction in the summer, or alternate pathways to demonstrate their proficiency, and most importantly, to improve their learning.
For two seconds, can you look back to the slide where this went?
Sure.
Thanks.
I like this slide too, because I think what it does is it shows our great progress. The other assessment, as Dr. Hazel said, is the access for L's. This is an assessment that is for English language learners, multilingual learners, and it's taken annually by students who qualify for the district's multilingual program. This test and the purpose of the test is to test students' overall language proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. If students receive a four point five or higher, they can be exited from the program, but their continued progress is still our responsibility, and we do continue to monitor students to make sure if they need supports moving forward, that we can provide that. There are six achievement levels that get measured by the access for L's test. And all of these achievement levels provide information on the multilingual students' continued language acquisition. The first one is entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. Because this test is given annually, it allows us to monitor students' growth over time and then provide supports as needed moving forward to ensure their continued growth. And that's how this data is utilized by the district. Multilingual learners come into the district in our schools sometimes at varying levels of language proficiency. So we utilize this assessment as well to see where the students are and to make sure that we place them appropriately so that we can provide appropriate instruction and make sure that all of the students improve. We did see some big gains in students' achievement on the access test this year, and that is a good sign. We do, you know, need to continue to provide professional development and increased instruction for our L's and additional supports, which we do, including in the summer. But our goal always is for students to show continual improvement. This slide shows our multilingual learners at grade level, and what we want to see over time is that their linguistic abilities and achievement increase. The access for L's assessment allows us to monitor that over their time in high school, and that way we can make sure that they have the proper level of instruction, and it allows for the teachers and the students and the parents and administrators to look at that data and see where we can provide additional supports and where we can make sure that students get the instruction that they need to show improvement as well. And this is something that we share with them so that they know that there's areas they can run upon as well. When you consider the data that the district has for testing, whether it's the NJGPA or the access for L's, it's really about using that information to make improvements, to do interventions where needed. And that's basically the district goal. We're committed to continual improvement. And so when we look at these scores, we don't just say, you know, how many students pass, that's important, but we also say, where's our areas of strength, where's our areas for growth? And then we put in intervention strategies where are needed. For example, we work to identify students who need additional academic supports in ELA and math. We provide multiple means of support for students, including tutoring and summer programs for those who qualify. And then the administrators, supervisors, and teachers work collaboratively through professional development to ensure that our instruction is targeted to where students need additional learning and where we can address the areas of need. This process of using data for instructional purposes allows us to continue to prepare our students for college and career after high school, and that is our ultimate goal. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
What goes in the portfolio if this student fails on that test? What are some of the things going on?
That's a great question. So when students take the NJGPA, we can see where the student was deficient. So the portfolio consists of doing tasks in mathematics or ELA that would enable them to work on areas maybe that where they showed they needed additional support or remediation. And then those tasks that they do along with a teacher, you're both allowing them to show their proficiency and remedying at the same time, but in an area where you know based on their scores where they, you know, I don't want to say were weak, but yeah, but where they can, you know, target that instruction because we don't, they, they're showing some proficiency on the test. If you don't meet the cut score, obviously you're not proficient, but they do show some proficiency. What we use that, that's what the portfolio does, is it allows you to target the areas where they still need a little more remediation, they get that added instruction, they do the tasks, and then that gets sent to the state to prove their proficiency. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Huff. And, you know, as it pertains to that state assessment, students take that assessment in the spring of grade eleven. If they don't meet proficiency, there is another opportunity in the fall of their senior year. But what's most important for us is, is growth and, you know, during a critical time period, ensuring that we have jumpstart programs, after-school tutoring, and support programs for our students to be able to get the extra assistance they need to be able to meet that test with success, first in their junior year, but if not in their senior year. Also, I know in our multilingual program right now, we have extensive professional development for our ESL teachers. That's something we're taking great pride in because we've had a real influx of multilingual learners, you know, in our program these past few years. So very challenging work.
How many multilingual learners are there?
We have about two sixty. And, you know, probably about fifteen years ago, it was about a hundred. So this has more than doubled, and, you know, you know, languages and, you know, representation from so many more different countries. Still predominantly, you know, Spanish-speaking students is the predominant language in the multilingual program, but really, we're really putting a much closer eye to see what else we can do to help support the students. To our next presentation, we have the twenty-three, twenty-four. This is the Student Safety Data Systems Report. It used to be the Electronic Violence and Vandalism Report. Mr. Mendez is going to be reporting on phase two, which is the second half of the school year from January to June. And again, I'm very proud of, you know, the data we saw, you know, going from phase two in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to phase two in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, a real significant drop in major incidents in our buildings, and that really is a testament and a credit to our hard-working building principals and administrators who are really setting expectations and conditions, you know, in our schools for student behavior. And I think when this gets presented tonight, really, I applaud all the administrators and our students for really rising to the occasion and seeking out, you know, alternative means or seeing a counselor rather than acting out, you know, in an inappropriate way. So excited to hear this report tonight, Mr. Mendez, and you're at the helm of supporting the building principals and the administrators on many of these areas.
Thank you, Dr. Hazel. You know, as Dr. Hazel said, every year, school districts have to report out two phases, all the violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying and substance abuse that happens in the school building. And, you know, as Dr. Hazel stated, when I present the numbers for phase two this year as compared to phase two last year, it's most, almost all of our numbers have gone down, and some have gone down significantly. So it is definitely a tribute to our students, our staff, and our administrators in our building. So the first, the first area is violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. So I'm going to go over each line and compare it to phase two of the previous school year, twenty-two, twenty-three. So this year, our violence acts, which would be like fights, we had twenty-one in phase two, and last year in this phase, we had forty-four. So almost in half. Our vandalism, we had two, last year in this phase, we had six. Our weapons, we had one this year, and by the way, this goes for all six schools, all ten thousand two hundred.
High schools.
High schoolers. So these numbers are very small. Our weapons last year at this time was four. Our substance abuse, these are students under the influence, this year in phase two was thirty-eight, last year was sixty-four. So again, a substantial decrease. Our harassment, intimidation, and bullying confirmed cases in phase two this year, we had twenty-six, last year we had forty-two. Our HIV alleged, these are investigations that are conducted and they're not confirmed for one reason or another, this year we had twenty-three in this phase, last year we had thirty-three in this phase. Overall, our HIV numbers are down twenty-three total for the, for the year as compared to last year, which is a big tribute to our schools. Our next category is, you know, it breaks down each one of these, so this is the violence category that had twenty-one. You know, we had four simple assaults, which last year we had six, two sexual contacts, last year we had zero, so that went up a little bit. Sexual assaults we had done, same as last year. Our threats, we had seven, last year we had fourteen, so that's cut in half. Our fights, we had eight, last year we had twenty-four at this time. So substantial decrease. Our vandalism and our weapons, so vandalism, damage to property, we had one, last year we had zero. False public alarm, this year we had zero, last year we had one. Our thefts, we had one this year and five last year, and our trespassing, we had zero both years. Our weapons, this year we had one, and last year we had three at this time. So again, a nice decrease. Okay, our substance abuse numbers. So this year, we had eighteen confirmed. Sorry, eighteen confirmed substance use, last year we had thirty at this time, so again, a substantial decrease. We had twenty-three possessions this year, last year we had forty-three. Again, another substantial decrease. Our sale slash distribution, this year we had two, last year we had none. Anyone that refused to take a medical exam who was perceived to be under the influence, this year we had one, and last year we had two. And then anyone in possession of drug paraphernalia, this year we have one student, and last year we had seven students, seven incidents. So these are the type of illegal drugs used by the students that were caught under the influence. So for marijuana, we had seventeen, and that includes, you know, traditional marijuana, also marijuana vapes, marijuana oils. We had seventeen this year, last year we had twenty-seven at this time. Prescription drugs, we have one this phase, and we had zero in last year's phase. Alcohol, we had one incident, last year we had five incidents during this phase. And then all the rest are zero, and that is equivalent to what last year was, they were all zero as well. So here is just a breakdown again of the phase two harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and the reason why I wanted to highlight that is because it is a substantial decrease from last year, and our schools did a lot of work this year in educating our students. You know, we've talked, in the last phase, we talked about the curriculum, the pathways to respect that the schools were implementing in the schools, and it's not only a tribute to our staff, like Dr. Hazel said, it's also a tribute to our students. We have a lot of student groups, our peer leadership groups, our LEAF or diversity groups. They've helped out a tremendous amount in the buildings as well, and these are just some of the things that we have done in our buildings. Dr. Hazel, if it's okay, I'd like to go into the HIP scores, the harassment, intimidation, bullying, self-assessment grades. So another thing that school districts have to do every year is they have school safety teams that talk about trends in harassment, intimidation, and bullying that consist of staff, parents, students, and they discuss different things going on and come up with different ideas to help each community. Because even though we have six schools or one district or six different communities, and what will work in one building may not necessarily work in another, so each school has these safety teams that they, they meet with. At the end of every year, the New Jersey Department of Education has us do a self-assessment on eight different components of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Okay? The self-assessment is done by the safety team reading through those eight components. The highest score you can receive on the self-assessment is a seventy-eight. I know a seventy-eight looks low, we're talking about grades and everything like that, but for here, a seventy-eight is the highest you can possibly get. So as you can see, the schools, all but two had a perfect score of a seventy-eight. The two that did in Freehold Township and Manalb High School, they gave themselves a two in one of the components of training for the school safety team, and a two is meets all the requirements. A three would be exceed all requirements, so they hit a zero through three for each component under each element, okay? And it adds up to seventy, the high score is seventy-eight. So, these are the scores that will be input into the NJDOE site. And then, at the end of next school year, the NJDOE will publish these publicly and we'll put them on our website as well. Okay? Any questions?
I'm just amazed with eight fights out of six high schools, 10,000 kids, like eight fights.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
They did a great job. They really did with their culture and climate in their buildings. And like I said, I, I think it's a tribute not only to staff but to students as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez.
Sure thing.
Do they have specifications or distribution on the HIB report? Please, what type of information does that have?
Uh, not here.
Do you know what the level they have? How many of them have individual cases?
I do not know that off the top of my head, no.
The kid is lost, so call him. He'll get information.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can give you a breakdown. I should have that here.
So, each HIB is identified. We have reports on it. So, it's just a matter of all screwing up.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Yeah. And each year is a different year, but what always continues is, is our education and, you know, our work with students in the buildings. Because we want a place of respect and tolerance and wanna work with students especially that are in need of help. But it's primarily the education and the expectations that we set forth in our district that helps us yield these results. And that work will continue. I think we're going to segue.
Into public hearing?
Yeah. So, we're moving into our budget, public hearing. And, you know, this has been a really challenging time for our school districts and many school districts across our state. This is something that is typically board hearing time is in the month of April. And we are now here in July looking at, you know, an amended 2425 school year budget. And tonight is our, you know, official public hearing on that amended budget. I have a couple of comments in regard to the budget as, as we set the stage for the public hearing by Mr. Voice. The amendment reflects legislation passed just two months ago. Legislation that provides a narrow window of opportunity to districts like Freehold Regional who have been devastated by state aid funding cuts since the passage of the S2 bill in 2018. As many of you know, S2 sought to shift state funding between school districts over a seven-year period based on certain wealth indicators. Freehold Regional was on the wrong side of S2. This has really been echoed in our district for the past seven years. This district has aggressively and relentlessly challenged S2. And despite victories to either minimize or defer state losses, the compounding impact of S2 has significantly damaged our financial footing. And I don't say this lightly, has put this district on a trajectory that poses a very real threat to the depth and breadth of the student opportunities that this community has come to expect. I wanna give you a sense of the magnitude of state funding lost under S2. The 2425 budget includes 30.6 million in state aid. That's 40%, 21 million less than the pre-S2 funding levels. The cumulative loss in state aid over the S2 years, it's a staggering 97.7 million. In addition, the district is slated to lose 10.8 million in the 2526 year school budget per the most recent state aid calculations. So, if that state aid formula was enacted, we are set to lose 10.8 million in the 2526 year budget. 73081 is in response to a well-known fatal flaw in the implementation of S2. In short, state aid cuts under S2 were intended to offset increases in property taxes. However, due to a law capping, capping property tax levy increases at 2%, a law not considered in the design of the funding formula or S2. Districts were not able to access tax revenues as S2 intended. This legislation acknowledges that a 2% property tax levy cap has undermined the funding formula and allows districts to recover a portion of the taxes that should have been levied in prior years according to the formula. The budget that we're gonna be presenting tonight reflects an additional 10,175,000 in property taxes, bringing the total tax levy increase, which is inclusive of the original 2% to 8.7%. While this is by no means a comprehensive solution to our financial position, it is potentially a meaningful step in the right direction. To put context, this district under S2 had to abolish 115 positions over the S2 years. If this budget passes tonight, this administration is prepared to hire 12 teachers, one nurse, and six secretaries, staff that were cut in this budget. This is important for us to immediately prepare for the opening of school and also reinstate programs that were cut. These efforts will continue with additional hires, hopefully at future board meetings. But it is important that we take this step tonight in restoring some of the positions that we have lost over these S2 years. Our priorities are instructional program, the supports that we have for students, and the tremendous human capital that we have in the educators of this school district for our students. That's one piece, as well as also the maintenance of our facilities for our students in this district. So, at this time, Mr. Voice, our business administrator and assistant superintendent, is going to walk us through the amended school year 2425 school year budget. And it was the voice.
Thank you, Dr. Hazel. Thank you. And there are some really key elements that Dr. Hazel just touched on in her opening remarks. As far as the context of school funding goes, this piece of legislation and the very limited window that districts that are similarly positioned to Freehold Regional have to, to make a decision on, on what direction they would wanna go. So, just to expand on some of Dr. Hazel's comments, this, this is how the, the funding formula works in a very straightforward way. And it's, it's not a complex formula conceptually. The state has an obligation under the state constitution to provide a thorough and efficient education to all students. So, in order to do that, back in 2008, they developed the, the funding formula, they called the SFRA, the School Funding Act, School Funding Reform Act. And this replaced a, a funding formula that was its predecessor, which about 10 years previous replaced a funding formula. So, every decade, every 10 to 20 years, the state goes back and, and looks at funding formulas for schools. But here's how they go about it. They first quantify how much should it cost a district to provide thorough and efficient education? That's step one. And then, step two is, how are we gonna pay for it? So, step one, they've developed a cost model, right? And they take each district's enrollment and push that through the cost model to come up with what they call an adequacy budget, as in an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. That adequacy budget is that, and that, that number's different for each school district because enrollment is different, different for each school district. Phase Two of it, how are we gonna pay for it? The way it works is the local community first, to the extent that they're able, and then state aid to make up the difference, so that every district ends up at their adequacy budget, receiving funding for, for their adequacy budget. Now, there are some tricky parts to this. And the one that this district and other, a handful of other districts have taken issue with and pushed on and even are in the middle of legal, legal proceedings to get to the bottom of the methodology to measure a community's ability to pay or their local fair share. Because remember, community first, state aid fills in the difference. So, the way that works is there are wealth indicators. One is the fair market value of the properties in, in the town. And the other is income per the most recent state income tax returns. And those two numbers are translated into ability to pay. Now, that, those variables that translate the wealth indicators into ability to pay has what really has been the core of the issue for Freehold Regional because it's very volatile. It's up, down, it's all over the place. And it is also directly influences the amount of state aid that the district, uh, that the state would have to contribute to Freehold Regional and each district for that matter, but Freehold Regional for us. So, as the local fair share goes up, the amount of state contribution goes down. But the, the key metric, so it's, it's a fairly straightforward approach. There's some nuance to the details of that. But I, I agree with the bones of it and how they're going about it. I just do think we need to be consistent, predictable, and fairly distribute state aid across all districts in the state. So, really, the, the key metric there is adequacy budget. So, that's the number that, you know, all districts would need to get to. And I wanna look at that for Freehold Regional in recent years. So, this is where we stand on, on, on where, where we are in relation to our adequacy budget. As you can see, over these S2 years, we have fallen further and further and further below adequacy. And one of the reasons for that is that the SFRA, or Funding Formula, if you will, was not designed with entirely independent law capping increases on the property tax levy to 2%. So, where the state was taking funds away from Freehold Regional, the design intent of the funding formula was that the, the district would be backfilling that with property taxes so that the two of them together reached the mark, the adequacy budget mark that, that the formula intends to, districts to, to meet. So, this has been the trajectory. We are now some $19 million below adequacy. And the, the strategic sacrifices that the district has made along the way over these seven S2 years have been, have, have damaged the, the structural integrity of our financial position. And they're running their course as we knew would run their course the whole way. We did this alongside fierce advocacy against S2 and, you know, trying to get to the bottom of the, the calculation for the local fair share because we think that's really the core of the problem. So, we, we've not had much luck, although we were able to get some legislation passed that deferred the final two years of S2, which was the year we just finished and the year we're just beginning, deferred the state aid cuts that were due under the funding formula. Those two years amount to 10.8 million. And that's what we are scheduled to be cut for the next budget we put together, the 2526 budget. So, if nothing else changes, we'll drop even further below, similar to the trajectory that you see here. So, this legislation comes out and as Dr. Hazel said, it was in May. And districts that are in this position have until tomorrow to make a decision of whether or not they want to exceed the 2% cap on the property tax levy. And as Dr. Hazel mentioned, this legislation really acknowledges that those two things, right? The, the funding formula and the 2%, they're unrelated. And the 2% cap on the, cap on the levy really undermines the design intent of the funding formula. So, there was a measure of look back of several years and a measure of districts that can levy tax that, you know, should have been levied along the way. And that's what's being considered here tonight. But I also wanna show another, another chart that, you know, with below adequacy funding, as expected, we have below, below typical spending. All right? So, Freehold Regional is highlighted there at the cost per pupil. There is audited numbers. Every school district is audited. That feeds into the state. They analyze it and group districts in a comparable way. So, for us, it's the cap, or the nine to 12 high school only districts, which there are only 31 of them in the state. So, of those 31 districts, we're, we are the lowest. The average of 31 districts is 20,000 per pupil. And you can see that we are considerably, considerably lower than that, we're 27% lower than that. We're also the lowest spending district among the 50 districts in Monmouth County. Now, that's interesting because the cost model, that part of the funding formula accounts for the difference in cost between a high school student and middle-class school student and an elementary school student. So, as you would expect, the high school student is the most expensive. So, with only high school students, you would anticipate that Freehold Regional would be the highest spending district in the county. But we're not. We are the, the lowest spending district among all school districts in Monmouth County. So, I, I think what this isn't, says and what I intended it to say here is there's not much room to move within our budget. And part of the decision that the board is considering here tonight takes that into account, just not only for the year that we're just beginning here, but for the years that follow. This decision will have an impact on that. So, let's touch base on local fair share. Take a moment to look at that chart. So, what you, what you're seeing here is the red line, which represents what the funding formula says the community should be paying in property taxes. Right? So, right now, it's at 205 million. Our levy at the 2% is 155 million. So, it's $50 million lower than the state's measure of what the community can afford. Now, we take issue with that. We have taken issue with that. As I mentioned earlier, that we're in a legal process to, to get to the bottom of, how exactly are you calculating that 205 million? Because we wanna, we wanna understand it and potentially challenge it depending on what it is. But we have not yet been able to get to the bottom of that. Now, let's not, from the state's perspective, this is not, this is as much of an art as it is a science, right? Because those two wealth indicators could be true. If you have five houses in a row all of the same value, the affordability of property taxes is gonna vary from household to household. So, there is an art to it. But yet, it still should be a predictable and defendable process to determine what the community can afford in property taxes. So, we'll continue to pursue to get to the bottom of that because the, this funding formula, the SFRA, is, is continuing until further notice. There's no discussion of replacing it and developing a new one. There is some discussion of revisiting it and tweaking it, is the word that we've heard used, which is not the magnitude that we needed tweaked. We needed change, I should say. We needed change in a more significant way because as noted on the last slide, as we fall further and further below adequacy, that is going to impact what this district is able to offer. And we, we've, we've made this case to a number of legislators over these S2 years that, you know, the benefits of Freehold Regional being a regional district has some significant benefits. First goes to the economy of scale, which is part of the reason that our cost per pupil spending was so low. Another, another part of that is that with 10,000 high school students, you have a critical mass of students. mass of student interest to make a program viable, right? There's enough kids interested in order to make that something that we can offer. And our range of student opportunities with a dozen magnet programs, i.e., full range of athletics at multiple levels, you know, I would put this district up against any district in the state as far as, as far as measuring student opportunities. So, we feel comfortable with that. But what the, what's being considered tonight is, and what this legislation permits, is, okay, districts, we acknowledge that, you know, the 2% cap on the levy has prevented you from accessing your local fair share, as was the design intent. So, in a limited way, a portion of that, you can access property taxes that should have been levied in previous years. So, this is, here's an important, important point that I want you to understand, is that although the opportunity to go above the 2% is very limited to this two-month window, the benefits of it are sustained beyond the year ahead of us. So let me explain what I mean by that. The increase in the levy becomes part of the tax levy base, right? So it's not a one-year additional $10,000, $175 in tax levy. That becomes part of the base, so that stays in play. So, from a property tax perspective, I think it's important that you understand that. From an operational perspective, that's important because it's not a spike in revenue that then drops off the following year. So there is certainly benefit to what we're doing in the year in front of us here, but there's also a long-term benefit for the budget years that follow. So, this being $50 million below what the state says our local fair share is, this moves us to being $40 million below what our local fair share is, according to the state. So I thought that was important to discuss tonight. With this, with accessing the legislation tonight with an additional tax levy of $10,000.175, that reduces our adequacy deficit by 53%, so effectively cuts it in half. You know, this is one area where we have control over our decisions for our, for this organization and this school community, but there are areas that we do not have any control, and that's where does this, how does the Funding Formula change? What will be our state aid in the future? That has been incredibly unpredictable. We find out in March of each year and then adopt the budget, but at the end of April, beginning of May. So, but, but the legislation that was recently passed does permit us to take action within the area that we do have some control. And it's a strategic decision. This was a fully considered decision, different variations of how we might want to put this legislation in play. We felt that this was a reasonable, appropriate place to land, but acknowledging that it's an increase in the tax levy, that's certainly something that's going to be felt by our community members. We'll talk about tax rate impact in a moment. So, for the year, the current year, the next logical question is, well, how do you plan to use it? And as Dr. Hazel mentioned earlier, there are a dozen teaching staff members that will be rehired for the upcoming year. We lost 39 positions in this budget as originally constructed under the 2% cap. So, that's, that's important. There's also instructional support, both at the district level and at the building level, funding for student programs, and also curriculum development and teacher training at the district level. There's also the reinstatement of the Raves Program, which is our Twilight Education Program, which to a segment of our student population is very important to them because it's really their, their opportunity to, to get their, their high school education. So, that was cut in the original budget that was proposed at the 2%, so we proposed reinstating that. There's also enhanced facility security measures. That's in terms of our emergency lockdown notification system, also improvements to our vestibules, right? So building out the mantraps locked, some second sets of doors, those practices where we have not been able to, to do that in recent years because of S2 cuts and limited funding. Also, address targeted facility needs. Now, these are things that are larger ticket things, HVAC repairs across the district. Also, door, exterior door replacements as needed, there's sidewalks that need to be redone, steps, outdoor steps that need to be done. There's also some bleachers that are not operating as they, they should. There's a number of things, and the one larger one there is our portion of, of state grants that we got to do HVAC work throughout the district. So there's seven, 60% is the district's share, 40% is on the state, so there's $700,000 in there in facilities and for that. But all of these things are things that, if not for S2, would have already been done by now, alright? But, but when you're an educational institution and funding is cut, of course, you're going to preserve the core purpose of the organization, which is the educational component, and some of these other things have, have been delayed, and we can address some of the more urgent areas now. Also, to reinforce the structural integrity of the budget, there was various pieces of equipment, technology, infrastructure, and some buildings and grounds equipment that we were going to five-year lease purchase, right, which just breaks up payment into five years. We're proposing to outright purchase that, which provides relief in the subsequent four years budget because I don't have those lease payments in there. Reduce appropriation risk. There, as I mentioned along the way, the decisions that we've made under the S2 years, one of those decisions is to take on increased risk, increased budget risk. So, our appropriations are getting tighter and tighter and tighter, and there's, you know, there are unfor, dynamic organizations, of course, there are going to be unforeseeable costs. So this is to bring back 50% of the additional risk that we assumed for the year under the original budget design. And also, return surplus. So, the, the budget under the 2% includes, included $2 million of additional surplus, which is effectively borrowing from, from the future year to support the current year. So we're going to return half of that as well. So all of these are, this is the use of the $10,000.175, but, and this is the year ahead of us benefit, but as I mentioned earlier, there's, there's benefit long-term, just structurally, our financial footing, as Dr. Hazel mentions, that's also a benefit of this, which is accessing property taxes that should have been levied, according to the state, over the past several years. So, property tax rate impact. So, the tax rate is only one component of the calculation of what it means to property owners and their actual property tax bills. There are other variables, what have the values of the communities, how has that changed over time? And you can see that there are four up and four down. Four down, Freehold Regional overlays eight municipalities, and the, the single tax levy of the district each year is allocated to the eight municipalities, and it's the state imposed formula of how that's done. So, that's why it's not all the same, and the tax rates, not every community is at the same percentage of assessed value. So there are other pieces to that. What I would suggest for you as an individual homeowner is to, is to understand the tax rate and then look at your own tax bill and talk to your municipal assessor if you have questions about your assessment. But the Freehold Regional component of your tax bill, here are the changes that you can expect for this revised budget. So, in summary, you know, the, the benefits of this legislation is to preserve student opportunities long-term, right, by reinforcing this, our, our structural budget position. It also reduces our adequacy deficit by just over half, and it moves us from $50 million below our local fair share, right, the measure of what property taxes should be, state's measure, to $40 million below that number. So, all of this, why, while we continuously advocate for changes in S2, and I think that for the '24-'25 year is the seventh and final year of S2, so I think the, the state is, is looking to make some adjustments to that. We would like a seat at that table, and, and we're hoping that it's a meaningful adjustments to really stabilize funding for districts like Freehold Regional. So Board, I'll open it up, any questions for you about this legislation or what's being proposed here tonight?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Bruno, the Board worked extensively to get our fair share of taxes, and it went to urban areas as opposed to per taxpayer payments. We did everything we could, and yet we were cut short. The way I looked at it, and staff, particularly one staff member, butt-holed me outside, and I agreed with him. I said, you know what? We are, we are not getting, we're not paying you guys at the rate of inflation, and it's not their fault. It's not their fault that the inflation rate is where it is. And one thing that you said that was very convincing, Mr. Bruno, was that what is there other than the school district? You know, there are a lot of good things in this area, but I personally came out to Coltsneck because of the quality of the education. If we lose that, we're in big trouble. So, you know, sometimes you have to pay the ransom, though, and having kids walk to school is not the way to do that. It's dangerous, it's not right. Cutting staff members is not right, in my opinion. We cut enough, and I think our backs are against the law at this point, so.
Thank you.
That's how I feel.
I want to thank the Finance Committee, and of course, Mr. Boyce, Dr. Hazel, and your staff. I have my house built 18, 19 years ago next week, and the reason why my partner and I moved to Howe was because the schools. Everybody looks at schools, we buy them home, especially today when they cost so much. Now that I'm alone and my partner passed, I can put as much money as I want to try to fix my house up, but it doesn't matter. If your schools are not good, do not sell your house.
That's right.
I don't care if it's Marlborough, Southend, or Howe Township. We've got to keep our schools up. It's amazing what we've done. I've been on the board now for nine years. It's amazing what we gave with S2, to keep our schools proceeding. A regional school district, we see what cost per student, $18,000 cost per student. That's amazing, incredible. So, I'm voting for it tonight. My home's important, I'm not selling yet, and every realtor that I speak to say, you're going to be okay because your schools are good. And you're a regional school district, and you're K-8.
Good.
So, so that's why I'm going to go. And I just think it's important to keep the staff that we have, keep the program that we have. And it drives me crazy when I hear people say, oh, it's just you play a pair. That's an extra tax on people. Like, one neighbor has four kids, all of them are high schools on our regional, and they play different sports. That's an extra pay for them to pay for the kids to play sports. I'm not for that, I wouldn't vote for that, and that's one of the reasons why this is so important for us to do. So. Anybody else like to add, make a comment? Not hearing any discussion. Miss Boyce, I'll read you.
Actually, you know what? I'll say something. No. So basically, what I think every taxpayer in this district needs to know, particularly in Marlborough, because I'm a Marlborough rep, really comes down to the fact that was exemplified before about our spending is lower than any in Monmouth County. And I could, being on the Finance Committee for many years, I could vouch for the fact that Mr. Boyce and Dr. Hazel literally watch out for every single dollar that this district spends, okay? So, and I've said this for many years, that in the business office here, the taxpayers could sleep at night knowing that keeping costs as low as humanly possible by having a, but having a strong education system is paramount. And the people that work in this administration consistently do it year after year. And I also want to state that I do know how it is when you're on a fixed income. I mean, my mother lives in Marlborough, her only income coming in is social security. So, believe me, I know what it's all about in terms of every single tax dollar, so I do feel good about Dr. Hazel and Mr. Boyce. So your, the taxpayers in Marlborough should rest easy in that respect. But bringing something else into it and being a Marlborough resident, it is amazing what the state government in Marlborough, in Trenton is doing to Marlborough. Because not only, if you saw the chart up there about the massive tax increase that the formula is imposing on Marlborough, but also in Marlborough, and my fellow board members here, we also have the state mandating all these massive housing developments in Marlborough. So on a day-to-day basis, we have traffic getting worse, and it's just time after time, Marlborough and the other towns in this district are constantly beat up on by Trenton, and it's just really exasperating as a regular, middle-class person trying to live their life in peace and tranquility. So.
Thank you.
That's my speech for tonight.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Bobby, if you didn't want to hear.
I represent Freehold Township, and I am on a, I'm retired, so I'm on a fixed income, and I look at the overall picture of what's best for the community, and I just feel that what's best for the students. And students have been cut short by the state, and I can't sit here and not do what's best for the students. And as much as I know my taxes are going to go up, and I might have to make sacrifices someplace else, I just think that my purpose of being here is for the students, and I just feel that this budget and this opportunity for us to help give a little bit back and get some teachers back is what I really feel I need to do in order to support the students in this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Igby. Any other board members who are going to go to the public? Anybody out here willing to?
Mr. Bruno, before we get to the public, just to, just clarify, because I know we have some folks that are new and we've not seen in meetings in the past, just how the Board handles public comment. Under the Board's bylaws, public, each person who wishes to speak, please should step up to the podium, please keep your name, your address, and the Board asks that you make your comments in three minutes. Question and answer is not, it's not a question and answer, not a back and forth. Usually, if you do have questions, please state all of your questions. Then when your time is over, the Board may respond at the end to all the questions that were posed. So I just wanted to kind of just explain kind of how the Board has handled public comment for a long time, because I do see some new faces here tonight. With that, Boyce?
Do you have it? One person, one was.
We have to, this is public comment on the budget only, yes.
Yeah, so she'd like to come up just this.
Yeah.
About the budget?
Just on the budget. We will have public comment on any other topic a little later. This is, this is, this is a statutorily required.
That question about the math, that the chart.
Oh, come on up. Come on up. That's budget.
That's budget.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Vima Chiridag, live in Marlborough, in Formosa Drive. Can we pull up the chart again that shows the distribution of the tax in Um, can we pull up the chart again that shows the distribution of the tax increase for Just want to make sure I understand and everyone understands the rate that Marlborough community is paying, the rate increase. So, from what I understand, some townships actually have their taxes reduced?
It's a good question, and there is an answer.
Okay, so let's see, Colts Neck, minus oh-six, so that the Colts Neck, actually, Colts Neck towns paying like point-six percent less next year, however, because, I mean, their houses are like million plus. Let's see, English Town, minus point, uh, four-point-seven percent. Farmingdale, low increase.
So, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of understanding of how this works. If the levy remained the same, right, so no increase, no decrease, if it were the same year over year, you would still see movement in all of the municipalities. And the reason for that is that the district's tax levy is allocated, uh, among the eight municipalities that it overlays, based on a couple variables. One is the property values, and the other is the number of students that you have in high school versus elementary school. So, with those numbers changing every year, there's going to be shifts, and always have been shifts, um, in the percentage share is the actual name, which is each municipality's portion of the tax levy. So, this, there are a number of things that go into moving this one way or another. And as I said, if the levy were exactly the same, you would still see movement up and down.
But Marlborough community, I think, is being the most...
So, the reason why, so can you tell the why Marlborough's high?
So, I, I mean, a, a part of it is going to be just the, the shift in the, the variables that allocate the tax levy, as I, I said before. The, there are a number of things, it's a state-imposed formula that divides up the levy, um, the percentage share formula, um, and it takes into consideration those things that I mentioned earlier. So, you know, Marlborough or any of theirs would just be scaled a little bit less at a two percent than, than what's reflected here under what's being proposed. I hope that helps.
Well, it helps, I just, I just think that, like, you know, on the base, uh, you know, some of the people who spoke in defense of this tax fight could not live in Marlborough, and so, they understand...
It also has to do with your home, your assessment of your home, right?
Sure.
So, my home is worth, is assessed for a certain amount, so my taxes, I don't even know what my taxes are.
Where do you live, sorry?
Other than Howe. So, my, my home is assessed, and it really depends on your home and your assessment of your, how, the value of your home, that's part of the formula, so you, so you know.
Any, were there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody in the public would like to speak on the, um, budget?
Mr. Boyce, if I may ask a follow-up question. Um, so, these percentages of how much each of the eight towns pays, that is determined by the state, correct?
The allocation of levy is determined by the state, yes. How it impacts the tax rate is really a, a function of where the property values are in that particular municipality.
Right, so it's, it's the state that's at the table?
Uh, I'm sorry?
I'm just confirming that it's the state that is saying, Marlborough is paying most.
Is the way that formula works for this year, yes?
Just confirming, thank you.
Mr. McCob, it's a statutory, it is a statutory formula that, that has been in place for over thirty years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna now state, I have, I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five annual school budget?
Motion.
Mrs. Higley?
Second.
Mr. McCob? Mr. McCob? Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion? Road hall?
Mr. Astetol?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
No.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Uh, so, we have four reports.
We have two board reports tonight, and we're gonna start with, uh, the policy. Mrs. Bruno?
The Policy Committee met on Monday, July fifteenth, we discussed and reviewed several policies and regulations for abolishment and revision for first read. The Board member, number and term policy is revised, the edits update procedure for filling a board vacancy. The curriculum content policy has been revised to remove reference to numerous New Jersey State learning standards, the NJSLS. This list did not include all the standards, and since NJSLS standards are continually changing, it is appropriate to remove reference to specific NJSLS standards. The physical examination policy and regulations are revised, the New Jersey Department of Health updated their guidance for tuberculosis testing in New Jersey schools. The update limits TV screening in New Jersey schools for teachers and other employees and other student, and those students who are at the highest risk for TV infection. The attendance regulation is revised. On January sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, legislation was enacted to permit New Jersey public school students from grade six through twelve, one state-excused absence each school year, to attend a civic event. The student suicide prevention policy is revised. Several state statutes were updated with new training requirements for additional staff members to be trained to warn and protect when they have information that a student intends to harm themselves. The student discipline code of conduct regulation is revised to reflect updated discipline guidelines pertaining to cell phone usage. The emergency and crisis situation policy is revised to include the requirement that school safety and security plans address the unique needs of students with disabilities during fire drills, school security drills, and emergency situations. The firearms and weapons policy and regulations are revised to provide some additional details, including the administrative code regarding student possession and/or use of firearms and weapons on school grounds. The volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular activity advisors assistance policy is revised to reflect updated NJDOH guidelines on tuberculosis testing. And that's it. That's all.
Thank you. We have, it feels like our policy was, like, last month, like, Monday, or...
Yeah.
It was only two nights ago. Uh, today, uh, now we're gonna do Finance, Mr. Higley, from Marlborough?
Okay, back on July tenth, we had our meeting, there were basically three topics that we discussed. The first one was with respect to the paving. That was done last summer at Marlborough High School, as everyone knows, um, the paving was not up to the standards, uh, that we required, so a resolution to that problem's still in debate. Um, we've mapped out what we can deal with and what's not acceptable, uh, and when this eventually gets fixed, it's actually gonna be next summer. Uh, and this was a contract for one-point-two million dollars, so this is, negotiations are still ongoing. But we do expect it to be, uh, a resolution to this issue is expected by the end of this year. Uh, very busy summer in building and grounds, uh, Colts Neck track's gonna be laid on August first, and it should be ready for fall sports. It's not a full reconstruction, and it should actually be completed by August fifteenth. Uh, summer cleaning's going on, every classroom's getting cleaned from ceiling to floor. There's inspections going on left and right with respect to fire suppression, air quality in the fire alarms, uh, gym floors, a very fine screening and varnish being applied in township Manalapan in Marlborough. Uh, we have a new generator being installed at Marlborough. Uh, this year, it's gonna impact the main office, the phones and the computers, they're gonna be on a generator if power's lost. Uh, I believe earlier, uh, Mr. Boyce mentioned earlier about grants, and we did get a two-hundred-eighty-thousand-dollar grant from the state for HVAC repairs. Uh, there was issues in art rooms, so we had to bring in a plumber to put in new drains there because clay has built up through the years. And then in Freehold Township, new PA system will be installed by Christmas, and then to just wrap it up, at Marlborough High's graduation, the mayor announced that, uh, the town was going to put in artificial turf and lights at the football field, so we just briefly discussed, uh, the logistics of how that's gonna proceed, uh, over time. And that was basically it.
So, now we're going to go to public participation?
Wait, I have a clarification, uh, Mr. Messinger, there's no cost to the residents of Marlborough, correct, with that deal?
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, there is, we are not gonna spend one penny on this when it's constructed, but we are responsible for the maintenance of it, and we did spend a lot of our time talking about, uh, how it's gonna be maintained, and we are certainly gonna keep an eagle eye on this field to make sure the maintenance costs are as little as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce, are there any changes in the agenda?
I do have a few. Um, in the back of the room, there should be an addendum, this color, um, I'll, I'll just move through it to give you a sense of it, there's an additional name on G1, uh, as well as G2, uh, G3, approval of appointments, there are additional staff, staff members added, these are all existing resolutions, um, modifications to them. Um, there's also on G5, uh, an additional item on approval of honor area, um, as well as G6, and G12. So, G is the personnel section, so those are all, um, addendums to existing resolutions on the personnel section. In addition to that, on G7, which is approval of leaves of absences, um, there's a correction, um, the, the, the name, Stephanie Hay, um, the spelling of that is to be corrected, and, um, Dr. Sharp, it's the last name, H-A-Y, is that correct? Or no, the Stephanie part?
Instead of E.
Okay, so Stephanie, S-T-E-F-A-N-I-E. So, those two things, and then in addition to that, uh, this is a new resolution, uh, under J18, a HIPAA appeal, the resolution reads, uh, motions to deny the HIPAA appeals in connection with report number FT dash two-three dash two-four dash four-three. And one final item that I included on the pre-printed agenda is K3. Um, Mr. Bruno, I'd like to remove K3 from consideration, so the vote will be absent of K3. Those are the changes to be made.
Thank you. Is there anyone out here who would like public participation time?
On any topic.
Public, on any topic? Yes.
Sure. I'll put you in.
My district has some examples, some data functions, this is like presentation, something you'd like to forward?
Here, I'll take it for you. Okay.
I'm there.
Okay. Oh, you, obviously, there, there are different ones, each one's...
Yeah, I mean, some have to look at...
Okay, no problem, uh, just go pass it on.
So, hold on. We have to...
Turn this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, dear Board members, community. I'm here today to address a deeply troubling incident that took place during the recent Manalapan High School graduation ceremony. A student chose to wear a stole depicting a Hamas paraglider alongside a Palestinian flag, a symbol associated with genocide, just like swastika, with murder, with rape, with beheading, hatred, and antisemitism. This act was not just a display of insensitivity and an offensive sign, as stated by the principal in his email, but a clear endorsement of ideologies that promote harm, hate, violence, and discrimination against the Jewish community. Following this incident, we received an email from the principal emphasizing the school's commitment to inclusivity and diversity. However, the response failed to explicitly denounce the antisemitic nature of the incident or condemn the student's actions. Instead, it seemed to divert attention with generic statements on diversity. It's crucial to distinguish between diversity, which celebrates differences in a positive manner, and the actions that propagate hate and violence. Imagine if someone celebrated the atrocities of nine-eleven under the guise of diversity. You don't need to imagine, right? Would we accept such justification? The same standard must apply here. This incident cannot be brushed aside or diluted with vague assurances. The student involved was educated at Manalapan High School for four years, and his actions reflect a failure in the school's duty to educate against hate and antisemitism. It's concerning that the school's response focused more on distancing itself from the student rather than addressing the underlying issue of, of antisemitism within its walls. Claiming that the student doesn't represent the views of the school is insufficient. The school must take responsibility for the values it instills in its students and its environment it fosters. Moreover, the lack of a clear plan to prevent future incidents is troubling. There were evidently warning signs, such as student previous dissemination of Hamas propaganda. This raises questions about the school's vigilance and responsiveness to such behaviors. Moving forward, it's imperative that Manalapan, all high schools within Freehold School Regional District take decisive action. This includes a public statement unequivocally condemning the schools, the student's actions, and affirming its commitment to combating antisemitism. The school should also engage a proactive education, education initiative to ensure that all students understand the consequences of hate speech and discriminatory behavior. Additionally, as the student prepares to attend Brockhurst University, it's essential that the university be made aware of this incident. Ignoring or downplaying such behavior allows it to perpetuate potentially impacting others in university community. In conclusion, Manalapan and all of the other high schools must demonstrate leadership by actively addressing and rectifying this incident. Our educational institutions must be safe havens where all students feel respected and valued. Only through consistent and vigilant efforts can we foster a community that truly embodies inclusivity and tolerance and diversity. Thank you for your attention and commitment to ensure a better future for students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, thank you so much, um, for being here this evening, and, um, you know, exactly what you said, this is a district and a school that strongly condemns hate speech, um, and offensive imagery, um, there are procedures and expectations that are set forth for all of our students, um, you know, this was, you know, this happened despite multiple measures that Manalapan High School, as well as our other high schools, put in place to ensure, like, nothing like this would ever happen. This particular case, this student took it upon themselves. There are multiple checkpoints, um, you know, in the school before students even enter that field, um, that Manalapan High School, the principal, the administration, and all of the staff that work there, to ensure that nothing like this would ever happen in our buildings. How, you know, he was actually able to put that on, I don't know, but this is, we do not accept, we condone any of this, we do not. Um, and we do, we have educational programs in place for our students, um, you know, we take pride in the rich diversity that we have here in this school district to be able to celebrate each other, um, and, you know, on behalf of the district, and I know our Board, I mean, we sincerely apologize, we, we take, you know, uh, go at great lengths to ensure that we have dignified, um, programs... you know, go at great lengths to ensure that we have dignified programs, these are celebratory events for our, for all of our students, for their families, for their friends, extended families, coming together to celebrate this milestone in our students' lives. And, you know, it was, it was taken away from many people on that day because of that. But, you know, it does not represent the values of this district or the school in any way, shape, or form. And I know our school had a lot of measures, you know, in place, and, you know, this, this unfortunate, you know, and situation happened. And I know our principal, and myself included, you know, were addressing, you know, everybody coming forth, but...
I want to thank you for having the courage to come tonight. It's only nine months ago, and people have forgotten some. So I appreciate that you came and had the courage to get up there and can speak for what young people, why young people do things. But thank you for educating all of us and reminding us of the horror of that day. Mrs. Bruno, did you?
Yes, I also had a statement.
Mrs. Bruno's of Manalapan?
I'm of Manalapan Rev, and I also had a statement prepared for the last month. And I wish to bring up the situation that presented itself to our district at the Manalapan High School graduation on Thursday, June 20th. Without permission and unbeknownst to any staff member, one of our graduates wore a custom graduation stall that, with an image that seemed to reference and support the Hamas terror attack against Israel that took place in October of last year. I am deeply disappointed in this action and disgusted that someone chose to introduce hate and divisiveness into our graduation ceremony. As a Manalapan representative, I want to tell the public that this is no way, shape, or form represents the citizens of Manalapan. Going forward, I will, I will work with our superintendent to make sure an incident of this nature will never occur again.
If I can add to that, please?
Please.
I have, for you, I was the first one to get these documents. I have pages one, and then it skips to five.
We have them over here.
Oh, you guys have them.
Make sure you have them.
I'd like to assemble all of those and then distribute it to all the board members so it's in one cohesive pack, if, if we can do that.
Are those copies?
So let me give this to Mr. Bruno.
Mr. Bruno, I also want to just take a minute to correct something I said earlier when referring to the addendum. I, I've said that all of these were additions to existing resolutions, except for G12. That is not an existing resolution. It's a brand new one. It's the approval of reappointments for 2024, 2025 school year. So I just wanted to note that.
Well, I'm interested. Well, I may just take a quick.
We'll catch you.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
In reference to what we just discussed with that issue of graduation, right?
Right. You want to go up to the podium now?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I can say it, please.
My name's Renata Schreiber, and I live in Manalapan. So what I found the most shocking of this whole incident was the principal's letter. There was not even a hint of, "We condemn this." None of that. It was all about diversity. So when you read something like that, what that means is like a justification of what this student did, glorifying murder as a type of diversity. So diversity should never include the glorification of murder. So why was that not included in the letter, is what I want to know. Why was that what you just said here? Why was that not put in the letter and sent out to everybody who was impacted?
Thank you. Okay. You guys are doing well.
Yes, and it didn't include.
Man, if you're done, it's not back and forth.
Can you include line?
Was there more? Read, read. That's why, that's all I'm saying.
So the words antisemitism weren't even in the letter. Like, the incident was not identified for what it was, nor was it condemned.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to take personnel and negotiations, G1 through G12. And I have a motion to approve G1 through G12.
Move second.
Mrs. Capiello, second was Mr. McCaff.
Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Acetola?
I'm sorry, say it again.
This is G1 to G12.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but I'm staying on G6 to Michael Vazone and Matthew Verdoni, and on G7 to Matthew Culkin.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. May I have a motion to take program operations, building, transportation, and physical plant H1 through I4?
Motion second.
Mrs. Higley, Mrs. Bruno?
Mrs. Capiello.
Mrs. Capiello, I'm sorry.
You got a good sound like Mrs. Bruno down there. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're going to take educational programs and administration, J1 through K5.
Just noting again, K3 is not being allowed.
So it's J1 through K5, no K3.
With the addition of J18.
J18.
That I previously.
Right. J18. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
And Mrs. Bruno, the second.
Yes, good question. Could you just reiterate why we're taking K3 off?
Of course. So K3 was an abolishment of the board's policy on conducting remote meetings during a declared emergency. The board's policy provider had recommended the abolishment of the policy because the regulations that the Department of Community Affairs adopted have expired. However, the revisions to the Open Public Meetings Act that allow a board to meet remotely during a public health emergency or any declared emergency are still in place. So the legislation is very, it was not meant to be a COVID-only remedy. So if the governor declares an emergency as a result of a storm, a flooding, or any, any other act, the board would have the ability to meet remotely under the legislation so long as it has a policy. So the recommendation is for the board to leave the policy in place. God forbid we ever need to use it again.
Okay. Okay, so, want me to do that again?
You're good. We have a motion, a second. This is the question, but Mrs. Capiello.
Okay, I need a second?
We have it.
We have it, okay. We need, we did the discussion already. I heard that. Any other discussion? No? Roll call?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. You go ahead.
Just want to thank Dr. Sharp, the administrators, supervisors, really outstanding work the past few weeks in preparation for this board meeting. And with the passing of this budget, we are able to bring back, like I said before, six secretaries and nurse, and 12 additional teachers to the district, two per school, six math teachers, again, a concerted effort as we continue to work and support our students in those classrooms, and four, five English teachers, and a science teacher. So every building will be getting two additional teachers. And this was just a really great effort the past couple weeks to be prepared so that our building principals and administrators can successfully work through the master schedules to be able to build these classes. And in those classes, you know, we'll have, you know, reduction of class size, and really focused a little bit more for the students who need support, especially in the area of mathematics. So thank you to Dr. Sharp and the schools. Also, this evening, on this agenda, we have two new hires in the Buildings and Grounds Department who will be taking the helm September 1st. I think this board all knows, they know these gentlemen very well, but Pat LaGravena is really been a dedicated employee with the Freehold Regional High School District since 2007, and he will be retiring September 1st. So they're very sad to see him leave. We have worked so closely together through the years and with Mr. Boyce's office.
Come to the office more than you want.
And it was a department that had, you know, four positions. We're actually now going to have a director, an assistant director, and a supervisor. So moving from four to three. So, you know, these are really, you know, critical and essential appointments, especially at this juncture in time, because during the past seven years, we've had some areas within our facilities that haven't been able to get the attention and the enhancements that they need. So, you know, we have our work cut out for us, and these projects, you know, were deferred. So we'll be doing a lot of work, kind of assessing and prioritizing our needs and making decisions for improvements in our facilities. But, you know, I first want to introduce to the board and to the public Matthew Verdoni. If you could please stand. He joined Freehold Regional High School District in February of 2012, really starting the district. I didn't even know this until I was getting all the information from Dr. Sharp's office, but started as a substitute, a custodian to Building Supervisor, and most recently as the district supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. You've worked in every aspect of the Buildings and Grounds Departments. You can see issues, you have great perspective, and, you know, you've held that position, I think, as district supervisor since 2018, working side by side with Pat LaGravena to ensure that our district is maintained in the best possible condition for our staff and students. Over the years, you have shown to be dependable, hardworking, and those who work with you describe him as having the unique combination of qualities, including dedication, professionalism, attention to detail, that are required to enhance the facilities and the programs of the Freehold Regional High School District. I am so pleased to recommend Mr. Verdoni to the position of Director of Buildings and Grounds, starting September 1st. Congratulations. Second-in-command will be Michael Vazone. He joined the Freehold Regional High School District in April of 2012. Prior to coming to the Freehold Regional High School District, was a general contractor in his own business. Like Mr. Verdoni, Mr. Vazone also started with us as a substitute custodian. From there, he worked his way to ninth custodian, to maintenance, to building supervisor, and most recently, the district supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. He's worked closely also with Mr. LaGravena, monitoring the work of all the contractors to ensure compliance with all plans and specifications, and have expertise in many of those areas, in your present role, supervising custodial and maintenance staff in all of our buildings. You have a comprehensive knowledge of all the systems required to operate and maintain our facilities and grounds. Really happy to have you on board as our Assistant Director of Buildings and Grounds, starting on September 1st.
Dr. Isola, so I've had the privilege of working with Pat LaGravena for well over a decade. Pat's been the director of facilities, and he has high expectations, and his hiring philosophy is to hire people whose expectations of themselves are higher than his expectations of them. We've worked with these two gentlemen for many years now. They certainly have that quality to them. And Pat and I feel that the department is in very good hands going forward with Matt and Mike at the helm. And so, we appreciate that.
Congratulations, guys.
I will miss you, Pat.
I will miss you, Pat.
Pat, I want to say.
We'll get him at the next meeting.
I want to say one thing about Pat LaGravena. He has put up with me for how many years? And he was a weightlifting champion, and I'm still able-bodied. So I got to tell you, that's an accomplishment. God bless you, Pat, and everything else.
Yep. See you, Merle Beach.
Just want to also introduce two members I see in the audience. Daniel Francisco, the mayor of Englishtown, who we've had a lot of conversations with. We appreciate you being here. Lot of education here tonight, lot of information. And also, Ida West Jones, who we've had the pleasure, she's in a new position right now. She's the Educational Liaison for Naval Weapons Station Earl, and will be supporting all of the students who, some live on the base, some live off the base, but military families, primarily, most of the students attend Colts Neck High School. But I know, you know, we had a meeting with Dr. Howell, with myself, and Dr. Donahue, and, you know, we just think it's absolutely terrific that you're going to be, you know, partnering with us to help support the students, you know, as they transition to the high schools in our district. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Anything you need for the education, we'll let you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any old business, board members? Any old business? I just have to say something before we wrap up tonight. I'm going to miss Mr. Perisi, my partner in front of Powell. We're sorry to see him go. He kept me up to date on everything that went on in Howard Township, because I'm so bad, I really don't even know, because I'm not really fully involved there, but I just live there. But, so he used to keep me up to town on what's going on in town, so I'll miss him. And I thank him for his certain years of service. Any other old business? Any new business? No new business? May I have a motion?
I make a motion for a juror.
Okay.
I hear a second. And there's a second down there. Get those?
That Diane?
Yes.
Good Diane. All favorites.
All favorites. Thank you.
I think those are all yeses.
They're all yeses.